Item was water purchase rate. Of course, we got the new rates from the city of Henderson. And so in the original budget, we did not have the rates. And so we were able to apply the purchase water rates on with an increase of six point seven eight percent. So it was not the thirty-two percent increase that we were expecting. So six point seven eight percent is gonna be the increase to purchase water from the city of Henderson. I sent it to you all a couple of weeks ago in um in your weekly update. I can resend it if you need me to, but the increase is six point seven eight percent. So code enforcement, and um this is something that I'll have to bring to you all for um approval. So the city of Henderson has asked to extend the code enforcement agreement for the month of July and August, and keep the agreement as it stands. So for the months of July and August, this county will still receive their revenue, and the city plans to have their department up and running by September first. Um I am recommending that we leave the code enforcement budget as is and do not reduce it just because we don't. I don't want, I don't want the city to be in a situation in which they ask us to continue the agreement, and then we have to do budget amendments. So if that funding remains in the code enforcement um budget, then we'll just leave it as is, and we won't touch it. Two months, mhm. Yes, ma'am. Anyone have any questions about that agreement extension?
I would prefer that the money probably be billed just for the first quarter or whatever. Just because the numbers getting big on the.
So you mean three months instead of two months? Is that what you're saying? What are you saying?
Three months, that'll give time to, if there's a delay.
Yeah, I'll talk to Hassan and see how he feels about that. But it's my understanding by September first, they should be up and running. But I'll talk to um, yes, sir.
Are you, are you insinuating that you're gonna bring that to a vote for our first meeting in July?
Actually, next week, when you all approve the budget, I plan to bring that law um agreement to you all. Yes, sir.
Based on what Dan said, can you have dollars? It seem like it would be better to be three months to me and everything, because it just doesn't seem like what.
So, so when you say dollars, what do you mean? Because we'll still collect the revenue for two months. We're not charging the city anything, because the current agreement, we were doing the um inspections for no cost at the city. So it's not a cost to the city. It's a extension of the current agreement, which is supposed to expire six thirty. They're just asking for two months, keep it as is, and we collect the revenue a hundred percent for two months.
What happens to a contract for a building permit that we set, we do, and then it runs exceeds the time beyond September if they decide to do the code enforcement? Who, who, who is gonna administrate it then?
So what you being? I'm trying to make sure I understand your question.
Let me give you a prime example. Say somebody goes in and gets a building permit for a new house, and they get it from Vance County in August. That house is not gonna be completed until next, probably six months, six to eight months. Who's gonna, who's gonna police that project?
So I will say um that those logistics have not been worked out between the city and the county. I think the city is still trying to figure out what their process is gonna look like, but Bob has helped them as a.
I would hope, I would hope that we would go back and tell them if we issue the permit, we're responsible.
Okay. Oh, you mean, okay, yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'm sorry. Now I understand your question. If we started the process, would we still be responsible for finishing it out? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Okay, I misunderstood your question. Yes, sir.
Well, I may have said it wrong.
No, I just didn't understand it. Yeah, if we, yeah, if we initially, yes.
If we initiate it, we should be responsible.
To finish that process. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's how the process is gonna work. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Conversation with them, and you said they're gonna have it up and running. I know we've asked this question. That means they're gonna advertise, fill the position, everything, and have it read it by September first?
Yes, sir.
They live in a fantasy world, right? They live in a fantasy world, right?
Are they speaking on potential candidates for that position if it's gonna be up by September when it's so hard to fill that position?
I know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. But Hassan has assured me that September first, they will have their department, or at least have a level-three person on staff. So I don't know if they have someone already or not. The position is not posted on the city's website. I do know that. So, yeah. Okay. So the next thing, there was questions about the debt service for um the Car Lake Station, and we do have one payment left for this year, so that will be falling off this year.
That's a ten thousand dollar payment, correct?
Ten thousand four thirty-six, I think that was right. Yes, sir. Um foster care clothing, um child welfare has um requested that we go from ten thousand to sixty thousand dollars for fiscal year um twenty-six, just because we have so many kids in custody right now. And of course, um the seasons change and children grow. So they have asked that that budget be increased by fifty thousand dollars. So we were able to add that. And the next question um was as it relates to solid waste and how can that fund be self-sustaining? So um the current fee right now is one twenty-five. My recommendation for this year is one thirty-five, but in order for it to be self-sustaining, the rate would need to be a hundred and forty-six dollars per household if we want it to be self-sustaining and not pull from our general fund to balance that budget.
And it's an enterprise fund, so it has to be self-sustaining.
It does.
What's the fund balance in the?
There's nothing.
There's no general fund.
Yeah.
So by law, we have to, it has to be self-sustaining.
I, I mean, I would, I would support the increase to be able to um get it so it's self-sustaining this year. I just didn't know if we wanted to increase it by twenty-one dollars this year. Warren County is one fifty. Right. All our surrounding counties are way more um higher than ours. And I think we went so long without increasing it.
That's one forty-six for the year, or what?
Uh huh. Yes, sir. Per household.
And we're doing one twenty-five now?
We're doing one twenty-five now. My recommendation to budget was one thirty-five, but we need it to be one forty-six.
Want to be self-sufficient? By law, it has to be.
I would, yeah.
It's an enterprise fund. You can't, I mean, you can't fund an enterprise fund through a general fund. I mean, you can loan money, but you can't.
Yeah, that's right. I just didn't want to. Should've increased it years ago. So I mean, if you all okay with one forty-six, we'll increase it to one forty-six.
The thing, I, I was looking at some of the expenses, and we'll do that in more detail when we go through, through that later. But if there's a way that we can cut some of the costs, I know that it's, they're tied to CPI.
Every year.
So the CPI would, would drive some of that. But there's some other costs that it looked like the revenues maybe weren't projected aside for, I think, like scrap tire fees and those kind of.
Is Jason here? Okay, good deal. Okay, I just want to make sure he can speak when we get to it. Yeah. But um so you all okay with one forty-six? Okay.
Unless we find something would cut the cost.
Not in that one. I wish we could, but, okay, all right, okay. So um community college, um you all agreed to set up a capital reserve for the community college for five hundred thousand dollars. And so we went ahead and added that to the ordinance um for, for next year, just so that we can move it out of um the unassigned fund balance, and so it's assigned to the community college.
Is that Grandma Karen is doing what, five hundred a year?
Four hundred, and so they're at eight hundred thousand after their budget has been approved this year. And so I had spoken to um several commissioners, and we wanted to know what the numbers look like to increase. So the first budget had an increase of five hundred dollars for the teacher supplement, going from twenty-five hundred to three thousand, and then a one percent for classified. And I spoke to several commissioners, because you all wanted to know what the numbers look like if you decided to do an additional five hundred for the supplement and an additional one percent for classified. So I did, we did, we went ahead and added that to this budget. And so I spoke to the school system that came last Thursday. And if Vance County decides to increase the supplement by a thousand dollars from twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred and two percent for classified, then those funds would, they would use those funds to, for that purpose. Um no other purpose. It would increase the supplement by a thousand dollars and get two percent for classified.
And they're at twenty-five now.
Yes, and have been since the late eighties, early nineties.
That's a misnomer, okay? Just let me tell you, in the late eighties, we were graduating six hundred and some people from, from high schools, seven hundred and something. Now, we don't, we've, we've shut down a high school, we've shut down a middle school. The teachers count is way below that. So to, to say that they haven't had an increase, we never decreased the amount in the fund. We, we've allowed that fund to continue, and the supplement should have been better. And, and it's a lot less teachers. We've lost, I think, thirty-five percent of our student population.
They do have decline in enrollment, and they know that.
Which, that takes down the teacher population. And when I look at, at the, the number of teachers, and then also there appears to be a supplement for some of the staff. Is that part, are we providing that supplement?
For?
Staff that are not teachers.
Uh, yeah. So that's what we're proposing, two percent classified.
That, that's, that's pay increase.
Right.
Talking about the supplement.
Uh-uh. They don't, no one else gets supplement other than the teachers.
There are some listed on the thing with a supplement. I don't know where that supplement comes from, and that's, that was my question.
Yeah. It's my understanding only the teachers get the supplement.
Can I ask you a question? Twenty-five hundred dollars that the teachers get, how much of that comes from Vance County? And how much of that comes from the school system?
All comes from Vance County. That's what was.
I'm believing that you'll find that twenty-four, two, two, two thousand, three hundred and some dollars come from the county, and a hundred and thirty or forty dollars come from the school system.
Okay.
I believe if you'll check that out, uh, that, that the fund is, and I'm, I, and I, I, I need to clarify. As far as that's concerned, but the last figures I looked at, it was two, it was two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, it's six, two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and a hundred and forty from the school system.
Okay. Yeah, I will. We'll talk, I'll get, I'll get with John.
Much input with this. Regardless if the, the public, you know, students are decreasing, teachers are still teaching. I don't care if we got five, or we got five, or five thousand teachers. They still working hard. They, I'm a teacher myself. Franklin County, like I said, they, they eight percent of.
Salary.
Salary, a supplement, and the supplement goes directly to teachers. No system principal, principal, anybody gets that, that supplement. That's what designed for teachers. So it's, it's not about how many students, it's not about how many uh, uh, teachers. They deserve to be taken care of, because they do a great job. And um teachers are um leaving the system, because it's a hard job. It's a hard job dealing with student, with, with, with um students. And so it, it is, it, to me, it's not about how many teachers or how many students. It's about making sure that we appreciate and take care of our teachers and let them know that how much they are needed, because it's not a easy job. And like I said, they brought forth some of the uh issues. We funding the detention center with money, and um why not um put it in our children, teachers, so we can keep them from going to that uh place?
But my take on it also, even though the enrollment is decreasing, is decreasing and fewer students, the teacher's job becomes harder. It's much more difficult in terms of what they're having, what students in terms of working with. And so therefore, it's our way of saying to them that we appreciate, because I think that if we put money in the supplement, we also support them and say, we're doing everything we can to help you, to try to keep you in the county. So I agree with your care. The teachers, the teachers deserve it.
Right. So.
My wife told me in terms of teachers, sometimes the teachers in terms of difficult and everything, the younger teachers, I think someone shared with us that they have classrooms now that they don't have certified teachers and everything. And that's a deterrent to the kids in terms of being able to learn and be able to gain the skills and everything. But so many of the younger folks that come in class now, they, they, their teachers walk in, things are not right, they're out the door the next day and everything. Then you gotta put a substitute, you gotta put a substitute in there. So I support giving them as much as we can possibly give them.
Right. And so I just want to make sure it's clear, um moving forward, this will be a one point two million dollar impact to our budget every year. So it's a recurring cost. So, um and one penny is four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So that's three pennies of our tax increase from last year. Just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that.
Well, you know, the folks that complain about taxes and everything, I'd say to the, I'd say to the people and everything, you know, we said one penny is four hundred, ought to be able to do it, you know, tell them what the needs are and everything. So when they realize the tax increase, we're going to support education.
They was here last, at their last meeting, supporting. They had the verbal one that was upset by taxes, was one that came back and say, let's invest in the children, with the school system. To say, let's invest in our, in, in the system concerning our children. And they appreciate, they want, they seeing where their dollars are going.
That's right.
A lot of the, the conversation that those people were talking about was local funds. We, we get a more substantial amount of federal funds, where, you know, they talk like we're Forty-seventh or something like that. We're not actually that. When you combine all the federal and state funds, we're, we're, we're pretty good up there as far as rankings in the state. And so, I mean, everybody wants to talk about, and, and I'm not gonna disagree for a minute about the teachers and what they do and, and how tough the job is. But we've got to look at the administrative expense that we have and see if that's consistent with other school systems. And I think that's where the challenge could, could lie, that the administrative side could possibly lighten up a little bit. That's just something we need to look at.
Well, like I said, I know eight percent Franklin County supplements, they get, they sow into their, and they give them longevity every year. Every February, and Grandma Karen is twelve percent supplement.
Twelve percent of salary.
Twelve supplement, twelve percent.
So we're gonna give them a thousand dollars, move on, okay?
Okay. 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 So, and the three percent COLA, since you all decided to table the salary study to um discuss later, um the COLA of three percent for county staff is um seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the three percent COLA. And so the salary study, of course, is um for a discussion later. Um there were some questions about McGregor Hall, so I just want you all to know that the city of Henderson has increased um their, um, their um funding from five thousand to thirty thousand for McGregor Hall, and so ours was still at sixty.
You said they went from five thousand to thirty?
Yes, ma'am. They did that in their meeting, uh, their last meeting.
Last year, a one-time thing for that?
Um so it, it was a one-time thing, but I added to the budget if you all, I'll, I'll let you give me direction if you all want to change it.
I think it's an outstanding thing. It's something we have, and it participate here in this community and moving forward with the city and the county working together. And I know our chairman's granddaughter, who was it we were talking about?
Oh, yeah, ballet, this year too. They, they twirl ballet dancers at um McGregor, and I was a program on Cinero Watch. It's the only event, place we have it. Good investment.
Okay.
I think the investment, I think in terms of the city, last year only five, and they come around to doing thirty. So I think they see that as the need for to, to support it and everything. And I do understand that when they do performance things in there, that we don't necessarily draw just from Vance County. We draw from the surrounding counties, even from Meckenburg County, Virginia, all the way to Halifax, Durham and everything. Because I find that people say it's easier to get here, the park, get out, and, you know, and you don't have the hassle that you have when you go to Raleigh and Durham to see a play in production.
They have arts alive. Those students perform from the school system. I think it's wonderful to have that and um other plays and drumming. So it's really the only thing that we have, and.
It is.
And it's important.
Okay, and um property and liability insurance is increasing by eighty-five thousand dollars due to the liability concerns with um child welfare takeover from the state and the detention center. So.
It increased because of?
It did, and the email is specifically stated that that's the reason why it's increasing. Yes, ma'am. Oh, did I skip it? Oh. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I skipped the library. So um Patty sent me email requesting an additional sixty-three thousand dollars, because we fund the library eighty-five percent. Health insurance. We provide health insurance. So her request for us additional sixty-three thousand dollars to be able to absorb the health insurance, since we fund them eighty-five fifteen, and they're on the county's health insurance. They always have been. So.
Did they miss that in the budget or something?
No, we didn't get the rates for health insurance until after she submitted her request.
It went up that much?
Forty-eight percent, remember? Health insurance. Our health insurance went up by one point two million dollars this year. The entire health insurance fund. It's been underfunded for several years, unfortunately.
So we have to do that?
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am. And so we removed the revenue from the city of Henderson, since that agreement is in limbo. So we removed that revenue from um the budget, just because the budget that, the proposed agreement was going to be fifty-fifty. So we removed the revenue that we would have received from the city of Henderson paying us to do their inspection. So that was removed, because that agreement is up in the air. And so the budget that was originally presented to you all, um, it was sixty-four nine, sixty-four million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. New budget with the information added is sixty-six million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, which is a difference of one million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars, mainly due to the um issue, the items that we just discussed. And the fund balance appropriated will be four million, sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to balance the budget. And so at some point, we have to have discussions on how to possibly reduce the, our, our budget, but also um increase our tax base with economic development. We have to. So.
Our budget last year, what, sixty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars?
Six, I think it was sixty million last year.
Sixty million?
Mhm. Yes, sir.
Eight hundred and ten thousand. So that's over a ten percent increase, eleven percent increase?
It's about right. Yep. Well, we think about the school, we added um health insurance, which we couldn't do anything about, which was one point two million dollars and one point two for the school system. And um our COLA for county staff was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So three point one million dollars in new expenses that we did not expect. And of course, like I said, one penny is four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Those are costs that we had no choice, right?
Have we, have we looked at anything about decreasing the budget? Of increases? Have we looked at anything at all?
It was kind of difficult to do that. There were a few things that stuck out that we could discuss. I couldn't really think of anything that would reduce it the, the way we need it to be reduced.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna bring up a tough issue.
Okay.
I might as well bring it up now by looking at trying to decrease.
Okay.
If I looked at things right, the Henderson Vance Rescue Squad, the last three years, has gotten seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. That's in thirty-five months, not thirty-six. And I'm, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
How much you say, um commissioner?
Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents.
With payroll, right?
Yeah, no, ma'am. That, that is payroll plus additional funds that we give them for additional things. If you need a copy of it, I've got it right here. And obviously, I, I, I'm concerned about, why don't we turn around and go with the Vance County Fire Department and, and put that underneath them, because those people are trained for that job. They're totally trained, and I see our fire chief is here. Uh, I like to, I like to ask him a couple of questions if I could, with just, and see what we can do as far as reduce it then.
Chief Harrison, can you come up, please?
I actually just want to, you said we seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, three sixty-four. Is that what we've spent, or that's what we spent for the year?
That's what we spent over the last three years.
Oh, those are the payments that have gone to the rescue squad.
And, and that salaries.
And the operating costs that they get.
A lot of people in this community think, because it says Vance County, that that's part of the county. It is not. And, and, and am I correct, chief?
Yes, you are correct.
And let me ask you this. Are you, do you have people in your fire department that are trained to do this now?
Yes, we do.
Can you give us a, can you give us, so we can see the whole picture?
Yes, ma'am.
Of what, what do the rescue squad give us? What do they provide for us? Can, since we talking about that, we giving them seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, so. And just, and he just asked a question that what they have, you all have as well. So what do they provide, what do they give us, the county?
Well, what the rescue squad is supposed to do is um provide the services.
Pull your mic up just a little for your hype. Push it up, okay?
Can you hear me now? The rescue squad is supposed to provide us with the services of heavy rescue, water rescue, and one more um service.
So when they show up on the scene, what did, because you said heavy, what is that really in my, we'd have talked about it.
Heavy rescue deals with um education.
Oh, educate, okay.
Yes. In that sense.
He said water rescue.
Yeah, if you've got a terrible wreck or something, somebody falls on a ground bin, those kind of things, that's what they do.
Yeah, high angle rescue.
So there's tools they use, right?
They got tools that they use.
Yes.
And you all have those tools?
We don't have all the tools, but as a whole, with the neighboring volunteer departments, we have majority.
Swiftwater rescue, um they do that also.
Swiftwater?
They also provide um air bottles, uh, when, when they're on scene. They, they refill the air bottles while they're fighting fires.
During this time, um, if I may add something, uh Watkins has the ability to fill bottles as well. They have a cascade system on their truck, on their apparatus. And I believe that Coates Berry is getting a cascade system installed in their station right now. So we can eliminate that process, and we can provide those services as a whole.
That means Watkins would have to be at every fire, wherever it is. And I believe their truck only does, it's a, it's not a full-service truck. It doesn't operate in speed that the machine that we have operates at, that the rescue squad has.
Eh, what, what machine?
Cascade machine. The portable one, the one that they bring on scene.
Is that something that we could potentially purchase?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Right. Can you, can you come up for a second? What did you say about the air trailer?
The air, so our truck has um a fuel station on it. It fills up to six thousand PSI. The truck doesn't replenish its own air. It's gotta be filled up by, you know, a machine, a air machine that essentially makes its own air and, and pressurizes the system. There is, that air trailer that the rescue squad houses was bought by the association. The association couldn't own it, to my knowledge, because the association wasn't five oh one C three status. So the rescue squad houses it, but the association purchased it with fire tax funds probably six, seven years ago.
Okay. So it belongs to everybody, for the most part. Okay.
Houses, so they the one carried out to the scene.
They, they did. They housed it, because they had the availability to house it at the station, or at their building. And they bring it, they, they bring it to calls when, as needed.
Okay.
Do you know who, do you know who the biggest supplier of doing those products is in the USA? I mean, in the world? Lindy Corporation. And Lindy is gonna be coming to Vance County in the future. So that's already in the process. Let me, let me ask you this. I, 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 I look at this and, and see this figure, here, this much money. And let me ask you, the, the fire chief here, if we did this service underneath the Vance County Fire Department, Golden Bell, how much would it cost us, as far as, and the training is already there. I see you got over fifty men trained. I read the numbers right.
They don't have a sixteen on staff.
No, I'm talking about the volunteer fire departments and the fire department of Golden Bell has over fifty people trained for this. If you need a list, I'll get you a list of them. And what I'm asking you is, if we decided to do this, as far as that's concerned in the future, what kind of cost would it be to begin this with, or do you have access to other people helping you out or whatever? I, I understand that, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that we just finished something with the Wake Forest.
Yes, yes, it was.
What did they, what?
Uh, what they were able to do when we had incident with a missing child down at the lake, um, they were able to, uh, we made contact with them, and they were able to come with their equipment and underwater drone. And with the underwater drone, that is the piece of equipment that actually found the missing child at the lake. Um, and they had other services, services that they could provide as well. Um, as well as um, just to help out initially, we do have potential MOUs that we could sign with neighboring counties um that could come in and help us with specialized trainings or, um, I would say, um, to help out in the case of uh high-angle confined space, uh rescues, all types of rescues, along with the city, city of Henderson as well.
So is that a cost to that?
Um, we have been speaking with someone, someone initially, and they don't. Um, we have been speaking with someone, someone initially and they don't want us to pay them anything. But sometimes it can be costs associated with it. But it is well worth it, uh, with the understanding that we'll be saving money as well as we get their, uh, qualified specialized training, trained employees to come in and help us out when we need it.
So the purpose of them coming in?
Because my understanding when I was talking with someone about when you have specialized training, they reciprocate and everything. They're glad to come in at no cost and help you out with no costs, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And because they, you hate tragedy, but at the same time, it gives them able to use what they've been trained to do also, right?
Yes.
So why do we have a neighbor, uh, when we have rescue, why was they here? You know, uh, they, did we not have the equipment?
Well, they are supposed to have the equipment, the latest equipment, I guess.
Some of we, that rescue squad should have?
Rescue squad is supposed to have the latest equipment, but they don't have, um, equipment such as the underwater drone.
And that what found the child?
Yes. That takes everything to a whole nother level.
So let me ask this question. What would it cost Vance County Fire Department to purchase the apparatus that is needed to be able to function in the same manner as the rescue squad? What's your best guess?
If I had to say my best guess, I would have to say anywhere from one forty to one sixty, hundred and sixty thousand.
One-time cost though, correct? So just to answer your question. I think I know what direction you were going.
I think where I'm, where I was going was you could save five hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And so if you do a one-time cost of one, let's just say one fifty. You know, whereas we're funding the rescue between salaries and operation costs, three hundred thousand dollars a year. Then, yes, I, I understand it. So cost-saving measures, I understand.
Cost-saving measures is what I'm looking for in trying to save money for this community and the taxpayers of this county.
And the other concern I would have is, um, of course, I'm new to this community. But when I think about, um, our staff not being trained to be able to do this type work for many years, we should be trained to be able to take care of the district in which we oversee, which is the lake. That's just, that's just my two cents on how I feel about it.
And I looked around and Chief, you can tell me whether I'm right or wrong. I've looked around at all the counties surrounding us. They don't have nothing like this. They don't have this outside agency that much money being thrown out.
Yeah, Alamance County just pulled their funding from their rescue. Um, and you want to speak a little bit about Edgecombe and how they?
Sure. Edgecombe County, uh, has a county fire department. Actually, model theirs after Vance County. And they too pull their rescue as well. So now everything is in-house. In the courts.
And that's, and they're saving money.
Absolutely.
So what becomes of the rescue? If we, what becomes of the rescue?
Well, they would have, uh, the opportunity to apply for some kind of employment with us if that was the case.
Because I thought that was one of the things that we had discussed earlier, to bring the departments, bring both of them, bring you together, the rescue with the fire department.
If we really want to save a lot of money, we can make the Vance County Fire Department a combination volunteer department, just like the other departments in there, so that, in the area, so that all of our citizens have a similar level of service. We're currently, this year in the budget, uh, I think the budget went from one point six to around two million dollars proposed. That budget has a, an extensive amount of capital in it to buy rescue equipment, which is right next door right now. We've, we've looked at this for a while and for some, from, we, we tabled this earlier with looking at it and in committee. And what we did in committee was we looked at and we could save the county, uh, maintaining the rescue squad and going to a combination with the others and moving more personnel out into the county. We could save, at one point, it was like four hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, and that's in addition.
We had a study done too.
To the four hundred thousand, the what?
We had a study done, Dan.
We did have.
Not to do away with the Golden Belt Fire Department. It was needed in this county, totally needed. This way, you end up in a situation where you end up having the, the total county controlling it and you don't have a private enterprise. It's not, it's not Vance County Rescue Squad. It's not, it's not chartered that way. It says Vance Rescue. And I, and, and people in this community think it is, and we're spending that tons of money out there and I don't see the return.
I see the return.
I don't.
I see the return and the ability to make, save more money by converting it and having.
You and I disagree, which ain't unusual.
So the study show, the study did show that we combined it, right? That's what, if I want to be correct.
The study showed two different things. The one part of the study says, don't do this, and the other part of the study says, do this.
The study said, the study said, don't do away with, um, Vance County Fire Department. Yeah, absolutely.
They didn't mention bringing it together though, right?
But it didn't say not to make a combination.
Better working relationships. That's what it said. Um, but I think bringing it together would mean them applying for part-time positions with Vance County Fire Department. There's no way to combine them. There's just no way. They would have to apply, they would have to move forward with, um, working for Vance County Fire Department.
And, and was there, and I, I may have screwed up on this, and I want to, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. This contract that we just had with them was for how long?
Three years. All of them are in a three-year contract. So all of their contracts expire June thirty of this year. So we're in the process of.
When is it up?
June thirty.
And so in essence, in essence, what we do in the future is, is after June thirtieth is what we're talking about now.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And, and in essence, what we could do is we could do whatever we feel would be appropriate for the future.
Yes, sir.
And I, and, and, and do you see us saving money, Chief?
Yes, absolutely.
And out of this deal, what do you approximately see us saving or, or what?
Over the years or over the span of? Well, well, I would say millions over, over a span of, what, ten, fifteen, twenty years. It will be millions.
And, and, and just the way they got it in Rocky Mountain out there?
Um, no, actually, they had a rescue squad once, Stony Creek. And eventually, which ran the same, the exact same way as the rescue squad does here. And eventually, they just kind of closed doors.
Closed doors, and that is the county doing it?
So Rocky Mountain Fire.
Mountain Fire.
Rocky Mountain Fire is rescue certified, correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay. City of Rocky Mountain, yeah.
How much would we save if we made a combination, made your department a combination department?
How much would we save?
How much would we save if we made your department a combination department?
Where would we get volunteers from though?
Hmm?
Where would we have volunteers?
If you made a combination department, it would have, like, the recommendation's been for years to have a combination department. We don't have five people on staff on a normal day and.
Well, the thing about, what the thing about, um, volunteers is if you look all over the place, all over the nation, we are struggling as a nation with volunteers. Um, if you look at the, the guys right here behind me, they can tell you that we are struggling with being confident and, and having dependable volunteers show up to these calls. So that, that is the one area where we cannot control, but it will make it hard to make it a combination department because you will still be depending on the same people.
Well, I beg to differ. The man standing beside you's fire department is a combination department. He currently has a five rating. The man sitting in the back there has a fire department whose rating is better than your rating is. So, and these are combination departments. So they do well. These volunteers work and they service and they do, do good things.
And he's shaking his head no.
Hmm?
The man in the back shaking his head no.
Slug, your, your, your rating is higher than the county's rating, is that correct? What?
I currently owe they four, I have some last rate. But I can tell you when it comes to volunteers then, I got five, it's over sixty-six years old and took my department.
Have you got any replacements?
Yes.
Well, oh.
So how's your?
It was absolutely true.
I think in terms of as we move this county forward, that I don't think combination works and everything. I think we should support a Vance County Fire Department. And I think I, when we started this discussion years ago, I was on vacation and I talked with people from other states and volunteerism just doesn't work. You don't have the people, the young people that are going into it that's going to drop things and volunteer and everything. And so if we're going to grow this community, we're going to grow in terms of industry, we need to support the Vance County Fire Department and bring things together and just have one in it.
Yes, and I, I want to make this statement as well is that, uh, for the most part, you can have a volunteer show up and drive a truck to a scene. But what we are experiencing, um, not just here but everywhere, is having qualified volunteers that can actually go in and fight fire or help. What they do majority of the time is they show up on scene and they kind of stand around. And that doesn't help anyone, especially not the guys that are fighting fire.
They can drive a truck?
No, he's saying.
But that man who said, folks, what's your folks, sixty-six years old? There was so much they can do, right? Not, not nothing against age. Say what?
No disrespect to anybody, but you're just not getting.
Ain't no way.
Where is it, um, recorded about how many calls they actually?
So I, I got that information. Um, I requested the information, but the problem is once you're dispatched out, when you're canceled, it's not logged in the system. So I already requested that information, but even when they're dispatched, if it's canceled and your sendback is not, um, in the, yes, ma'am.
So, but they go, they go on every call?
I, I'm not sure how they're dispatched. I don't, I doubt if they go on every call. There's no way they can go to all, every call.
So what they do when they get, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure we look at this whole picture. So what, they get there, what is their job? Rescue.
At a fire?
At a fire.
At a fire, they get on scene and they fill bottles.
They do what?
Or, or, they fill bottles.
What is a bottle?
Nation, for the air packs.
Well, a lot of times, um, because if you look at our monthly reports, you'll see that we have sometimes four and sometimes three people on ship. Uh, there've been cases where the rescue squad helps in, uh, getting fire trucks to the scene, county fire trucks to the scene, and they work together with, with everybody. Uh, so, so this, this kind of group work is, has been going on for years.
I guess.
Nothing against rescue, but I'm gonna give you an example. The other day, I was coming down to Andrews Avenue there. Fire truck somewhere, there was a fire or something, um, on US one. The fire truck passed going. Then a few seconds later, the rescue squad came around. So I decided I would follow to see what was going on. By the time I got on US one and headed, headed south on US one, the rescue squad was coming back. So whatever they were going to, they weren't needed, right?
Yes. Um, a lot of time if, um, the initial engine that arrives on scene or unit that arrives on scene, if they don't need help or assistance, then they will cancel the rescue. And sometimes the rescue still goes, uh, arrives on scene and checks on scene. Which, if you do, do that, then it kind of gives you your quota for arriving on scene.
Just your experience here. You been here how long now?
Uh, probably about a month and a half, almost two months.
In a month and a half, have you seen any instances where y'all were not on the scene first?
We were not on scene first? No, I haven't. Not firsthand.
You was always there.
For the most part, yes. From, from my viewpoint, yes.
That's incorrect.
Well, you, you can say what you want, but I'm not telling him he's incorrect.
I'm just telling you he's incorrect.
Well, I trust him.
I see the CAD calls.
Hey, I trust him.
So the rescue squad is really a non, is they a nonprofit, right?
Yes.
And they do have part-time? How many, do we, do they have part-time?
They send me their roster annually. I think if I think about the, maybe fifteen staff members that are part-time or so.
For the rescue?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
We have fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
I guess.
Can I go back to a, a question that you asked?
Yes, sir.
Dealing with the rescue, e- even if they do arrive on, say if they arrive on scene and they're to start a fire, they can't do anything.
So they're just there. My question, that, that goes back to my question. Approximately how many calls have they had where they are the major player? Say for instance, like with the drowning of the little girl, that was something that the rescue squad would typically do. How many such instances in the last year have they had where they were the ones need to help a drowning victim or excavate somebody or whatever?
Well, well, you got to think about it, like, there's those incidents that does not happen that often. Um, so if, that, that is a high-risk, uh, scenario. But at the same time, how often does it really happen? That may happen once or twice a year.
And, and I think if our, the fire department have apparatuses and vessels to do that, that's something we can respond to without a doubt. Because we're a twenty-four hour department, not volunteer.
So who in the, who in the process of you all purchasing drones as well? Who said something? But drone, they needed a drone to find that child, right?
Yes, on the water.
Didn't have it.
No.
Yeah.
I, I believe they, they have equipment that's supposed to be on their, um, their boats. But I don't think it helped in that scenario.
So, so, so what you're saying, so that the volunteer fire department going to purchase drones? If that's needed, because they couldn't find that child and that was needed, because we had to call in another county.
Yes.
I want to see was, if that happening again, what do we do? Call another county? So you all see it's better beneficial?
Well.
Call another county, then invest, and, uh, I'm just trying to get a bigger.
Well, I think that we should invest in our own, uh, with everything. Every entity out here from Watkins to Coatesbury, eventually, years down the road, everybody should have their own equipment. Uh, therefore, we make a stronger community. It's not just we don't have to wait on rescue squad to get anywhere with a boat or anything. Everybody will have that opportunity to do the same. And we should have members of all departments in the surrounding area trained to a certain level. Um, so that if, for example, Vance County is out at a fire, Watkins can step in and, and take, um, our new boat or equipment and use it as well because they will have trained employees with all this stuff, um, drones, whatever the case is. Um, those are the plans.
Okay, I see major mention on, I need to hear what he has to say. Yes, please.
And it's about thirty-five on their roster.
Thirty-five, um, part-time in the rescue?
Yes, ma'am.
Or volunteer paid part-time?
Oh, I believe all of them are part-time.
Rescue squad.
Rescue squad, mm-hmm.
Folks, I'm going to add to the melee here. Um, I don't know if I've told y'all, I was the charter captain of the Youngsville Swiftwater and Dive Rescue Team. I'm emergency response diver, have been certified for over twenty years. I'm also a volunteer with the Lewisburg Fire Department and we're in the process of starting a dive in our Swiftwater and Dive Team there. Um, as far as the sheriff's office is concerned, I know I can speak for the boss on this and we've discussed it many times over the last two years. There are multiple occasions, um, over the last three or four years that the sheriff's office has applied for a grant on two separate occasions to start a dive team that would be through the sheriff's office, but we would be seeking outside, you know, fire department EMS, anybody wanted to join this team. Vance County does not have the largest body of water in the state. But we have one of the largest bodies of water in the state. And it's one of the first things I recognized six years ago when I came here is we've got the Car Lake Reservoir. And there's no dive team in this county. And the sheriff's office, we're specifically calling the Reds team up here and the Youngsville Dive Team and Rocky Mountain Dive Team to come up here. Now, being that I've been in, 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 in that area for over twenty years, I was also a member of the Reds team in, in Garner, which is res- rescue extrication delivery specialist. The Reds team is one of the highly, the, the, the most highly trained teams in this nation when it comes to, what the chief was talking about, heavy rescue. If we have a situation like that at Car Lake, it's, it's not a, a rescue anymore, it's a recovery. By the time your team gets here, it's a recovery. That's all it is. Youngsville, Franklin County has got Lake Royale, Mitchinors Pond, which is maybe fifteen acres, and the new, I'm sorry, the Tar River. But Franklin County has got a very professional, very highly-trained Swiftwater and Dive Rescue Team. So I guess what I'm asking is that y'all really consider, the sheriff's office, we're going to continue to apply for these grants. Both of those were denied. Uh, one of them was to outfit four divers and get them trained. The other grant was for a forty-two thousand dollar watercraft that had a zero percent match. We're going to apply for that again this year and I feel like we'll get it because I was pretty much given assurances, if you will resubmit next year, uh, we'll, we'll get you your watercraft. But, um, please just consider what these folks are saying. We, we don't have a lot of these things that, that we, we need. And I know they cost a lot of money to outfit four divers. It's going to be about twenty-eight thousand dollars. But without a watercraft, your divers are useless. But just consider those things if you would. Um, because when y'all started talking about Swiftwater and Dive Rescue, it's all I can do is stay in the chair. Because the sheriff's office has been fighting for this for two or three years to try and get something started. But if, if you do, like I said, I'm ERD, um, be happy to help with it. I've talked to David Pease, he's the chief of the Reds team, dear friend, been friends for over twenty years. Um, David and his folks are willing to come up here and help train, cross-train. But literally, the Reds team is coming up here this week to, to attempt to locate evidence that was discarded in our lake related to homicide. So that's all I got.
Renee?
Yes, sir.
I got a question. Whatever we do, as far as that's concerned for the future, what do you need from us as far as this issue?
I just need to know if you all want to con- I just need to know if you all want to continue to, um, fund, since we having these conversations about cutting costs, do you all want to continue to fund the Vance County Rescue Squad? Or do you want us to invest in our own, um, capital and get what we need to be prepared?
So you talking about now?
I think the contracts are expiring on June thirty, so...
Well, there's other options.
Yeah.
The contract is expiring...
June thirty.
June thirtieth. Now, I'll ask our attorney on the board, I'm told that you have to have, there is a non-appropriation, uh, class action in any contract that's written, which means that you can terminate it anytime you want. I, 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 I hope we can save money, but I also don't wanna be tied to something that's three years long. I, 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 if...
So if you all want to not fund for three years, that contract can be reduced if you want to. You don't have to do three years. We can do three years for the volunteer fire departments. We don't have to do three years for the rescue squad if you all want to go a different direction. You can do three months, you can do six months, you can do nine months, you can do one year. It's, it's totally up to this board what you all want to do.
You could just extend the contract, so like what we're doing, um, we just did for someone, for the city, maybe just extend it, and then we have a chance to see the, the costs effectiveness of each option. And therefore, when we looking at it, we see, are we gonna save this amount of money? Are we gonna save that amount of money? You know, I'll, I'm still wanting to know, I know it's based on an as-needed situation that in terms of the rescue squad, but I would just like to know, under the, in the last three years, how many times have they really been the main player, uh, in terms of a rescue?
Okay.
Um, or was it sort of them helping out somebody else?
So you just want no more information that supports that, okay?
Effectiveness of the department, then weigh the pros and cons. But that would give us, you know, just like we did extension for the jail, the medical services, we're doing extension for the city, maybe just talk to their board to see if they'll do us, you know, I don't know how long, but do an extension, since our time is getting ready to run out within two weeks. Uh, give us additional time to look into the pros and cons. Uh, or e, you know, when we talking about getting new equipment, even if it's beneficial to talk to their board about if we decided to merge, would they be willing to actually sell us their equipment, um, since they would no longer need it as a board?
Okay.
That would save us from having to go out and purchase that equipment.
Okay.
But in terms of, of the clause, um, I would, you know, I don't make a statement unless I actually see a contract and see what clauses are in it.
It says sixty days notification.
And possibility of extension. But I think that discussion should be on the table that we actually, um, talk to them about an extension while we investigate certain, um, things as it relates to a merger of the fire department with the rescue or the rescue, uh, terminating rescue and allowing those individuals to have first options in terms of any available positions, or, you know, how it would be most efficient for the county in terms of going forward with it.
Right, okay. What type of extension?
Based on what she's saying, we can, we can extend the volunteer fire department's contract, but do, uh, do what you said, sixty days with them?
How many, what time period?
You're not gonna create a rescue squad in sixty days.
We don't need to.
It's not about creating a rescue squad.
Hey, I, what, he's already, he's already made arrangements for everything. But my point is...
No, you're wrong.
Well, we're never gonna agree anyway. My point is, my, my, my point is, as far as that's concerned, is I'm trying to save this county money, and I'm trying to make sure that taxpayers aren't paying more than they have to. And I see two groups that are doing the same thing, and one was born in nineteen fifty-three. Nineteen fifty-three, and the things that were happening in fifty-three are not happening in two thousand and twenty-five.
No, because there're no farms.
That's right.
There're no farms.
This is what I, this is my, what I believe. This is what I believe. Um, and I, data tells the story. Data tells the story. And it just like, if I'm renting from you, you have to give me thirty-day notice before you can evict me out of that house. And my thing is, we talking about, you know, like I said, um, which, if we talking about the rescue, I would love for them to be a part of what we, I mean, a say, of what's going on. If, if it's not need, the board makes the decision. Um, but what I'm saying is, it's just like you're gonna throw me out of house with no notice. And I would love for them, somebody to represent the rescue squad, just to let us know, especially what, um, Commissioner Feaster said, to have something to say before, if we get rid of, of it or not. And if we need to disengage, fine, but at least give them an opportunity to come and say something before us, before we can make a major, because that's like I said, you're gonna throw me out of house when you give me no notice, and I got nowhere to go. And, um, and I know that they got part-timers, and I know that they nonprofit, but I think they still need a fair opportunity to have somebody to represent them, especially if we gonna, um, like I said, if we gave them a six-month or a year to say we fund them for a year, at least give them opportunity to be a part of a conversation.
Can I play devil's advocate with you?
You can play it, yes, you can.
Play devil's advocate with you. You use the knowledge in terms of giving an opportunity, in terms of throwing you out of house.
I know I ain't paid rent.
You've already seen in terms of, you've already seen the cost that it's costing us to do that. And if I was going to evict somebody, if I had been created that kind of cost, you wouldn't have, no need to come to me, because you out of here.
And I, and I guess to his point...
They still got thirty days to move.
Yeah, and I guess to his point, the contracts do expire June thirty, so the notification is in the contract.
I'm sorry, Renee.
I was just gonna say, to your point, um, the notification is in the contract, because, I mean, it says June thirty. The contract is in in June thirty, so. But I understand what you're saying as well.
I just would love to have them, at least hear what, um, have a voice.
I support, I support maintaining in the budget for this year. You said there was a sixty-day clause.
Yeah, at least a year.
We're not gonna have a rescue squad that is up to par, that can be on scene and do what these guys do. We don't even have the call data here. And, um, and so that, we need to get that, and it needs to go back to the committee that's been dealing with this for a couple of years.
If I had a child, I would say at least give me a year or something.
That's what I would support.
Chief, how certified, how, how many officers, uh, firefighters do you have on staff that are actually certified in doing what rescue squad does?
Um, we have, I do not know the exact numbers.
Okay.
Um, but we have several members who are qualified in certain areas, most definitely.
And so let me just clarify. Only thing that's missing is the equipment. I just need to be able to clarify that. The only thing that we need is equipment.
Yes.
We have staff, and we have staff members at any volunteer fire agencies that can assist as well.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And then last year, someone bring to us, uh, folder with all the folks that had the qualifications. Then we have that last year, that someone put a folder, I think somewhere, we had a folder that was presented to us with folks that had the background and the qualification to do what they need to do in terms of rescue.
I don't know. I don't remember that, Mr. Kelly.
Somebody presented us a folder with the qual, that people were qualified.
Oh, that's, well, Mr. Hester has it.
I got it.
Mr. Hester has it. So those are, those are all the employees for the volunteer agency as well as Vance County Fire Department?
I've got the volunteer fire department, and all except, three I didn't get was Coatesbury, Kitchell, and Dreward. They haven't gotten back to me, but I got Watkins, Dixborough, Verapone, Epsom, and Townsville, twelve, eight, forty, twelve, and three. On Coatesbury, you say?
And, and there are several, several disciplines that you got to be certified in. Are those individuals certified in all of those?
You got, you've got individuals certified in all of, all the categories.
Oh, yeah, I see it now. I will email it to y'all.
We'll email it.
We'll hand it to the community college, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We may have hit an impasse, and so with what you said, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see us maybe move forward, and it's like you said, have the, uh, rescue have an opportunity, but I don't want us to be tied to long term.
Yes.
No, I, I want us to be flexible enough that we could do some things in the future. And if I, go ahead, Renee.
I was gonna say, and so this year, um, the Vance County Fire Department will receive a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the fire tax, and I would like to see that funding used for, for us to be able to purchase the apparatus that we need.
I, 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 that's fine with me, but I, I, I'm talking about the extent...
Oh, the contract.
Of the contract. I, I don't think we ought to do anything beyond thirty days at a time.
So you saying thirty days at a time?
At a time. I, I know other people not gonna agree with me. That's fine. Thirty days at a time, and in that way, you evaluate the whole thing and look at it. And if you can save money, that's what we need to do in this community.
Yeah, we definitely need to save money, because we need money to pay for jail.
Going up.
But then we just, but then we just talk about what, we, what this rescue squad do it on a thirty-day basis, right? The other one's gonna do, go ahead with their contracts, right?
Those are three years, yes, sir.
So you think a year is too long to evaluate?
Yeah.
How long did we get at the, uh, jail when we were looking at the medical agency? And we had to extend the contract?
We did, and we haven't extended. The contract ends June thirty, and we're going right into a new contract.
With the?
Mm-hmm, the same, yes, ma'am. So we, we haven't extended anything.
These guys, we don't have enough people to fight fires, much less talk about doing rescue.
It didn't. And, and, yeah, we thought it was gonna expire, but it didn't.
Two days, look at your body. What are you gonna do?
But we were looking at how long. You said they don't have enough to fight fires.
They, I mean, look at the staff.
Thought it was gonna... But won't they have enough if they, if...
No, they don't.
They gave us a notice.
Say what?
Won't you have enough manpower if this goes away? Won't you have enough manpower, because you have positions that would be open, that people can apply for, which will give you the manpower you need to be able to do what rescue is doing now?
If they decide to, if you guys decided to fund positions, I guess.
Yeah, part-time. We would just have to allocate money only for part-time, so it wouldn't be any salaries or fringe, it's simple part-time.
Do you have the manpower today to do this job?
Yes.
We do.
The man says yes.
We do. We definitely do.
I did...
I, 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 I get the monthly reports. I look at them. We've got shifts that, we've got three people on shift. We don't, I'm, I'm speaking.
Please, Dan.
We've got shifts that we have three people on shift. We don't have enough men to actually operate a truck until we get volunteers there.
Chief, do we have enough men to operate and do this? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so, so let's go back and look at the staffing reports and then let him answer that question.
Chief, do we have the men to operate and do this job?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Let me ask this question. Um, normally we doing, um, three-year contracts, and, and I believe Tommy has said it's over seven hundred thousand dollars in that three-year period. But we were divide that, um, three years and just say to renew a contract up to one year. And then that way, we would only have to, I think, spend around about two hundred for the upcoming year, and they would, we can look into...
It was, it's about, it's three hundred thousand, because it's going up. So it's one sixty in salaries about, with the increase in salaries, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think. Yeah, it's about three hundred thousand that we would spend next year, if you all renew it for one year.
But we do it for three years. We could buy what he's talking about, what he needs and everything, if you do that.
Absolutely.
You know, why extend it for three, ten to four years, spend that money when we can equip him with everything he needs with the three hundred thousand dollars? Not against you, uh, fixed and everything, but I don't see doing it for a year. I see maybe three, what, thirty days to sixty days, and get the stats that you're talking about, so let us look at it. But if you gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars, this would give the fire chief enough money to do everything he needs to do and equip him, what he needs to do and be able to handle rescue.
And it's my understanding that the community college would train anyone that needs to be trained, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
So where are we at?
Give him a sixty-day contract.
You.
Extend the others.
You want a twelve-month contract? Is that what you recommend?
That's what I recommend.
I don't see a twelve-month contract.
So where are we at? I can't hear, I'm sorry.
Did they put it in a motion?
Oh, we can't.
You can't, they're not in one session.
We can't, we in a, we in a work session, so we can't. I just need consensus on what the contract should look like. How many months?
Oh, in July, can we ask?
So if we...
And have him to come before the...
Y'all want Doyle to come speak? The sheriff wants to speak?
How you get into this?
I guess because I put a name in.
Yeah, no.
I just, I asked, I asked of you all to please study this, to table this, because what search and rescue plays a very important role in Vance County. What they do, search and rescue, whether it's recovery or search and rescue for a small child, missing person. We look mighty stupid standing on the ba, banks of Curl Lake when someone's dead child, loved one is out there in the lake, and we got to wait for a teen to come from another county with a boat to search. I just say, I'm not saying the chief can't work it out. I'm not saying it, but please study it. That's all I ask y'all to do, study it.
So you're just asking that we get our equipment before we pull? That's what you're saying, yeah, right, yeah, absolutely, yes, sir.
I'm not going to get some rescue squad.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, please just make sure, if we implement some, make sure that we have the equipment and the training to do so. I don't want the Vance County Sheriff's Office standing on the bank of Car Lake or some pond, and one of your loved ones out there, and I can't do a darn thing. Or we out there searching with a rescue squad, sends fifteen, twenty people out there to help us search. Just make sure we got people in place. Make sure y'all study it, table it, and, and figure it out.
So, so Sheriff, again, you saying we need to get equipment to do this?
You need, you gonna need a boat.
Because even with...
You gonna have to have a boat.
Oh, yeah, we know.
You gonna have to have a boat for the Coral Lake, you have had John Bosco ponds. You gonna have, have a list of things.
Sure.
So just study it, please.
Yes, sir.
Just don't rush the decision in doing this. That's all I ask as sheriff of Vance County.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, say for instance, if there's a murder case, homicide, and that body's in the water, is it up to the rescue or the fire, to do that?
Rescue.
Rescue.
Fire department's never had a boat to go out and do it, not to my knowledge. Vance County Rescue Squad has, anything relating to water, the search and rescue or recovery, Vance County Rescue Squad has always done so.
Gentleman in the back, she can say it now.
That's because we've never had a boat, correct?
I, I, I never know Van, the fire department to have a boat.
He was saying, we haven't been able to do it just because we didn't have a boat. Not that we didn't have the staff, but we never had a boat.
Boat and training.
We've never invested in a boat.
It's just not a matter of having a boat. You gotta know what you're doing, because you're collecting evidence.
Yeah, we have staff that's trained. Yeah, we have guys that are trained.
We just don't have the equipment.
We just don't have the equipment. We just need the equipment.
We can't do it, we just don't have the equipment.
I just ask y'all to study it, please study it.
Somebody want to say something?
Well, if you extending, if, if, Sheriff, if you extending contract thirty days at a time, that's extension, correct?
However, y'all want to extend it, thirty, sixty, ninety, or six months? I mean, just make sure before you put it into play that we have the right tools.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely. We wouldn't dare pull it without, yeah, no, 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 we wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
You, you have... That's right.
Right.
That's all we got.
Yeah, that's right. That's why wait for us had to come in and use their drone, yeah. Right. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because even the rescue squad can't get them out, right?
Right. That's true.
And Chief, you came from Rocky Mountain, so y'all have the equipment to get bodies out of the lakes, correct?
Um, I believe so.
So you would know what to order, right?
Yes. I would definitely have the contact, um, to see exactly, find out every piece of equipment that they have.
The last time this happened on Car Lake, they had to bring the Navy in, the plane crash.
So if you all terminated today, at the, at the third, June the thirtieth, would, would they have the equipment July the first?
No, 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 we need to, we have to, we have to order it. Yeah, we have to purchase it, right? We have to purchase it.
We, we, we do not have the equipment, but we will have resource, numerous resources to come in and, and assist us if needed immediately.
So I just need direction on contract extension time from you all.
I, I think we ought to do it also on Thursday, extension each, if we need it. And, and that, would that help you with your budget?
Yes, significantly.
That's what I want. I don't know what the rest want.
Do it on Thursday, do it on the Thursday, because, but I thought you said in the contract that the contract allowed for us to, to, to do, what is it? To terminate it when we wanted to, right?
Yeah, it's sixty days, but the contract is ending on six-thirty, so the notification is already in the contract.
When that contract ends, what are our options when that contract ends? We have the ability to do what?
We can extend it for whatever time period you all want to extend the contract.
Well, I suggest, my thought would be thirty to sixty days in terms of work. But Feaster said in terms of looking, in terms of getting the information you need, all the information so that we be able to do what we need to do with the, with the, with the phone.
So, so your recommendation or is to...
Recommendation, extend it.
Extend it while we, while we continue to, um, purchase our apparatus and whatever we need.
Do what we need to do.
So whatever timeframe that we need to purchase our apparatus is the extension of the contract. Is that what you all are saying?
I think what I heard over here was that we wanted to talk with the rescue squad still and have some more conversation. I think what I heard over here was that we wanted to talk with the rescue squad still and have some more conversation.
That will take place within the thirty to sixty days, Dan.
Thirty to sixty days.
We don't need to put that in there in terms of talk them, thirty to sixty days would give us time to do all the in-house stuff we need to do.
Period.
And if we need to send another thirty days, we extend another thirty days until we make sure that the violence, that the Vance County Fire Department is equipped with what they need to do. With the product, with what they need to do in order to move it forward and everything.
Okay.
I still feel like it's only two weeks to our next July meeting and since some board members would like to hear what.
So the issue.
Why I have just put them on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, like we've been doing everybody else, DHS, Sheriff, you know, and, and just have them appear at July.
Right. I agree with that, but if I appropriate the funding for the entire year, then I can't just snatch it. It has to stay there for the entire year. So I need to know how much you all want me to fund them. I need to be able to fund them for three months, six months, nine months, thirty days, do a budget amendments every thirty days. I just.
Well, they, I said sixty.
Thirty to sixty days.
Fund them for sixty days.
So fund them for sixty days and allow them to, the opportunity to come in and have a conversation with.
I'm still on you.
I'm on, I'm on twelve months.
Okay, I just, now, okay, you say you're, you're sixty.
Thirty to sixty days.
Thirty to sixty days.
Ms. Perry? Twelve months. Ms. Fane?
Thirty to sixty.
Thirty to sixty.
Twelve months.
Twelve months. I was gonna say six months.
She said six months.
They're like a hundred twenty days, you know? Either, I, I would say ninety to one twenty.
Ninety to a hundred twenty days?
Yeah, it's like three, three, three to four months.
Thirty-four months. So can we do ninety? Okay, so, well, you're okay with ninety days. You're okay with ninety days? Okay, so four people are, four commissioners are okay with ninety days?
Okay.
Okay. She said, she said ninety. I have four people that said ninety days. Three months. Okay. So I'll, um, appropriate enough for, um, ninety days. Okay. All right, thank y'all. Yeah, we, well, you all made that decision on how the contracts look. It's not whether or not they agree or not. If they want to be funded, it's gonna be ninety days.
But I still would like to see them on the.
Oh, yeah. And we'll, yeah. So y'all want to see them in July seventh?
We cut them off after that. Now, you got, you got money in the budget.
And if you're gonna, you got the boat.
I said this right here.
And so now I need to call, um, Ms., can you come up for me, Ms. Brown? And so, um, Sandy wanted to be a part of this conversation as well.
Yes.
And so, um, DHS is recommending a Child Welfare Program Manager, which will be separate from some programs that Ms. Weaver can speak on as well. Okay, Ms. Brenda Brown?
All right, yes.
Yeah, I'll go back to DSS since Sandy, I was able to attend the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Currently, we have a program manager, um, for child welfare that covers child welfare, adult services, work first, child daycare, and energy. What DHS would like to see happen is that this program, Social Worker Program Administrator Two, be sallowed a standalone position. And the reason why we're asking that with child welfare, there's so many things going on within child welfare, we need that person really to focus on his sole duties for child welfare. However, a couple of years down the road, a couple of months, you can always reassess it, but we're asking right now that it be a standalone position.
So, and before you speak, Sandy, I spoke to Argretta and apparently, um, the previous DSS director, um, the position one time was just for child welfare. But when Danita was director, she combined them. And so child welfare, I would even recommend it be its own standalone, especially with the issues that we've been dealing with, cause having to deal with child welfare and all those other programs, um, would not be beneficial for that person. And so if you all were to approve the Social Worker Administrator, and I would recommend a one level for that position, not a two. The, um, total comp, um, the total impact to the budget would be between ninety-eight thousand and a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And I already have it in your proposed budget, if you're all okay. Sandy, you have something you want to say about those other, other programs, please?
But you did say that one person had four different.
Five.
Yeah, five different programs.
Child welfare, adult services, work first, child daycare, and energy.
They did direct over.
They, they oversee all those, all those programs.
So let me ask you a question. Prior to, um, Ms. De Vega merging,
Mm-hmm.
what was allotted for that position before when, when it was only?
Yeah. She hasn't. Yeah, she's gone. Yeah, you can come on up.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you. I just want to start with saying that, um, when I got to DSS in October, one of the first things that was identified was classifications are all over the place. There are multiple areas where classifications were assigned to employees that were not doing the role they were classified to do. That alone is a compliance issue under this Office of State Human Resources. We continue to have multiple positions that are like that. We had hoped with the salary study that this group would help us identify some of these disparities so we can make these corrections. Now, the first correction is, it's not a program manager. This is a Social Work Program Administrator Two position. And when that position was requested originally from the Office of State Human Resources, as every position with DSS has to be, it has to be submitted along with a job description, the, a list of the programs it will supervise, and the duties that it will have along with the staff it will supervise. The state takes that information and they determine the classification, not DSS, not, not the county commissioners, and not the county manager. That is a Office of State Human Resources decision. When that position was requested, it was requested to supervise child welfare, adult services, work fir- work first, energy programs, in addition to two administrative support positions. That's what it was classified to do. At some point, a director, I don't know which director it was, made the decision to put it under child welfare only. And then I think when Ms. De Vega came, she did something different with adult services. Child welfare alone does not constitute a Social Work Program Administrator Two. A Social Work Program Manager would. We do not have that position. What we have currently is an administrator. My suggestion is to request a new position for a, a Social Work Program Manager to go over child welfare. That is what would be in compliance with state regulations. Pulling our administrator is going to cause another compliance issue. So, and that has been the role, that has been what has happened since the state came in and took over. It's like, we're gonna fix child welfare, but it doesn't matter what happens to any of these other programs. That I have worked diligently for the last seven months to correct. For example, adult services, when I came in, it was in worse shape than child welfare. It was. It was worse. We went on a corrective action plan, much like we did with child welfare. I got a supervisor in place that I had to beg, plead, and borrow to get seventy-two thousand dollars, which is ten thousand dollars more over the minimum. She was an internal employee with twelve years of experience. I got that in place. We got off a corrective action plan, got a glowing letter three weeks before divestiture from child welfare from the state, commending me for my leadership in pulling that program out of that problem. Since the state came in, that same program, they pulled my, on my support to help transition a new supervisor. They pulled my intake, on-call support, the intake, the on-call, and my administrative support. This is the fifth position they're trying to pull from that program that I worked so hard to pull out of corrective action. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're creating problems in all my other programs trying to fix this one program. Child welfare needs to be fixed. I don't, I do not dispute that. But we need our own program manager, which the state says is what you have for child welfare only, not a Social Work Program Administrator. We're getting things done at a hasty rate and we're not taking into consideration the long-term effects. We've got to stop, slow down, and look at what we're doing. We're getting ready to create a bigger problem than what we already have. Please just listen. If you don't believe me, reach out to the state, reach out to the Office of State Human Resources, let them tell you what is ideal for this role. And let them make the decision, because they're the ones that if we do this, is going to come in and we'll have another compliance issue.
So what's your recommendation?
I recommend that we develop a new position, a Social Work Program Administrator, just for child welfare. Leave the administrator in place, because that's what you would have that would be over that program manager, and that way we would be in compliance with both roles.
Okay, so earlier you said you wanted to be a manager administrator, cause you just said administrator.
Currently, we have a Social Work Program Administrator Two.
Correct.
And that position per state classifications should be multiple programs. And when it was submitted for, it was submitted for adult services, child welfare, work first, energy programs, and two admin support. Now, I can't, it's, I can't answer for what other directors prior to me did when I got out of whack. Cause there's probably twenty other positions in the, in the agency that are the same way, that we're trying to correct one by one and get them into the correct classification. This will be setting us back. I recommend we get the program manager, which would be the whole new position, and keep the Social Work Program Administrator that would be over that program manager, in addition to the supervisor for adult services, work first, energy, and the two admin support people.
Okay, so one position that oversees all of the different programs?
Ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let me ask you a question.
Hey, she has a question, Sandy.
Okay, right now, um, whenever you all go to court, because a petition has been filed, you have an attorney rep, you have the, actually, sometimes you have the foster care worker, and you actually have the caseworker. But, um, over the years, you had, you've had a supervisor that comes to court as well and sits with the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what role, what, what position does that person hold? Is that, is that the admin you're talking about?
So the supervisor for that program has been vacant since two thousand and twenty-two. So, and it continues to remain vacant, but the program manager would be over the supervisor for foster care that would go to court. But you would see that program manager there with that foster care supervisor, in addition to the in-home services and the CPS assessments also. They should be at court every other Wednesday with all those supervisors and those caseworkers.
Okay, you say you haven't had a supervisor since twenty twenty-two.
For foster care.
Do we know what salary range did that position?
What was the job? It starts at sixty-two thousand. It is, um, a social work supervisor three. The, the minimum pay for that is sixty-two thousand.
Okay, I'm just trying to get understanding. So what you, what you recommend?
Yeah, we came from.
Level?
Mm-hmm.
For the position is something different, Ms. Weaver, what you saying, right? So.
Yeah, so Sandy is saying create a position that'll oversee, um, the child welfare program manager as well as the other programs, right? Is that what you're saying?
Saying create the program manager just for child welfare, but leave the administrator that we already have to oversee. All the programs.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
What I just add, I'm Renee on board. Being that we're overseeing child welfare, I can check into that and see exactly what it is that we may need to oversee.
Okay.
Um, whether it be social worker program administrator, or manager, whichever one it is.
Okay.
It's, those programs, five programs are too much for one person to be having.
Yeah, I agree.
Regardless, so I can check into the title and who needs to do what, because it depends on the county.
It does.
You can have that social work program administrator just do one solo, like smaller counties do.
Yeah.
So I, I would definitely check in that far as a name, but five programs for child welfare person is just too many.
Okay, all right.
And I agree with you on that subject, but I do have a question for you.
Okay, Sandy.
Okay, so what's gonna be the difference between what the supervisor would be doing versus what the manager would need to be doing? If we just had that one position?
So that's a loaded question, really. I mean, so the supervisor should be that boots-on-the-ground every day with those workers, doing that one-on-one supervision of the cases, staffing, assigning, and assessing the needs of the children on those, the foster care social workers, and making sure that they are making their contacts and meeting all the other standards of the caseload.
Okay, so who has, since it's been vacant three years, who has been pretty much doing that? Nobody?
Anybody. We could, we've been putting Band-Aids on things with part-time temporary people. We had an interim program administrator that was part-time. He was trying to, it's like pouring water in a bucket when you have all these vacancies. He was trying to do what he could to support it, in addition to myself. And that's, that is the scenario that has led to the issues we have, though, is not having the people in place to do those things that we need.
No, I was just gonna say, so you're advocating, um, leaving the supervisor position in place even though it's been vacant, plus adding on a manager as well?
Yes, so the manager would do the higher level, um, management of all of the supervisors. So in child welfare, you have, again, foster care, in-home services, and you have CPS assessments. The program manager that we're recommended, she, they would oversee all three of the supervisors, well, actually four, cause there's an on-call supervisor too. All four of those supervisors, they would do that higher level, like pulling data, looking at reports, handling personnel issues, those higher-level issues that supervisors can't get to during the day because they're busy supervising cases and working on the, working, you know, in the field and doing that hands-on work with those social workers.
And so you've mentioned three. You've mentioned a, a manager and a supervisor. So are you asking us to, to, um, provide for all three of those?
We already have the supervise, we already have the supervisor position. The only position we're asking, well, the state is asking for is the program manager. And I agree. I do agree with what Ms. Brown is saying. It is a lot for that one person we have now, the administrator, to do all those programs in addition to children's services. But if we pulled that person away, we, we're, we're not gonna have anyone for those other people. And then that, that puts them reporting to me, in addition to all the other supervisors in the agency. And so we're, again, the programs that we have worked so hard to pull into compliance, we're losing that layer there. We're just going to revert right back where we are with those programs if we keep creating these problems.
Okay, so now my next question is, if we were to create a new position for a manager. Now, in terms of, um, the other departments that you mentioned, um, have you already have someone in place to oversee those, or you gonna have to hire somebody to come in and oversee the, uh, aging and the other, um, different departments that you identified?
That, the administrator position has been vacant for well over a year, way, way before me.
So, and I just want to speak a little bit about, um, the social work program administrators per, um, OSHR. So the social work program administrator two position normally supervises between seventy and ninety social workers. Do you have that many social workers?
No, we don't. That's why I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
That, yes, that's why.
Okay.
For, for the department to get that approved years ago, they had to put all the programs under it to meet the number. That, you're exactly right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, let me ask you this question. A couple of years ago, um, I believe Gloria White was the board chair. She approached us and asked us to create a new position. Um, and at that time, the person who she had, who the department hired actually left and they really didn't occupy. Remember that position, um, was it in finance? Remember AJ?
Mm-hmm. Was it two thousand dollars? Was it a two thousand dollars?
It was a new, we created a new position, and it was for somebody, because they could not do, um, we brought in from Warren County, the person, they could not do, um, that we moved, they were moved up to a position. They couldn't do it. Uh, Ms. White stated that instead of firing that person, they moved that person to a different position, and then that position came open and,
I believe that.
It never got filled. So I'm asking in terms of, did that position, after that person was moved, ever get filled?
I would have to know the name of the position, but what you're describing does not surprise me, because there are so many people, um, that, that I've seen that that's been the scenario. They, and classifications were sent to the state saying that somebody was gonna do one thing, and then when they got that approval, they came back and they're not doing that, which, again, creates another compliance issue.
Okay, I guess the reason why I'm asking is because we did fund, it was a sixty-seven thousand dollar.
The position was in finance.
In finance. Yeah, but they never filled it. So I'm just, in terms of us coming up with a budgeted money, since that position was never filled, maybe eliminating it, since it really wasn't filled, cause it was only created for that person, and taking that funding and, and move it to the social work.
I don't know that it's, I don't know that that position isn't, I have to look at the budget to see if it's.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I don't know the title.
Yeah, cause I know, uh, we created a position, and then the lady.
How long ago? We can pour minutes.
Like two years.
It's about two years.
We had to pour the minutes. And the only one I think, Renee, that I knew of that was vacant is the one we're using for the computer systems administrator. That's the only one that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the accounting tech, technician position, and we're using that for her compliance position.
This one accounting.
Yeah. So maybe it was already unfunded.
Well.
The person.
It's a, it's an accounting specialist one, that might be, but it's not a sixty, that, it's a lower-level position.
But that could have been, um, with salaries and fringes, the total sixty at the time.
But that, we did have one accounting specialist position that had been open and unfilled for many years, and we're using it for the computer person that we needed, instead of creating a new position.
The position was still, when the votes to be filled, I'm saying since it was never filled, why not take that money?
We've already taken, because we've, we've added an IT person.
Okay.
So that's what the IT position, we use that money for that. So we've already used that money for. So, we've already used that money for.
Yeah, if that's the position, and it sounds like that might be the position. You may have to cross-reference it with the two position, Renee, because, because Ms. Cooper, you know, she went from one, which she had got her time in.
Yes.
But then she ended up leaving too, didn't she?
Accounting specialist one.
Did the lady end up leaving?
Yeah, that's it, Sandy. There's no more, um, finance positions in here. It's just the accounting specialist one.
Okay.
Everything else is, um, social work supervisors and everything else. Yeah, that's it.
She came into that job.
So, uh, what is the longest time that you have some positions that are actually been vacant?
Oh, gosh, we, like, the one that I know the longest is the foster care supervisor that you me- mentioned, and I know it's been vacant since two thousand and twenty-two. We have a part-time custodian that's been vacant for quite a while, but there's a reason behind that also.
We need, we actually need somebody to do that, um, job that was vacant in twenty twenty-two.
We, mhm. That is one of our most critical roles we need to fill.
So, I guess I'm asking in terms of when we saw a list of the vacancies at DSS when we were trying to figure out a way to do a job fair or something to encourage people to apply, there was a long list of vacancies. So, I'm just wondering in terms of some of those vacancies, I'm just trying to figure out a way. And I'm just speaking openly, this is, to, you know, to myself, trying to work it out because this is a work, it's a work session. So, I'm trying to figure out some of them other positions. Have you examined it to see if some are not absolutely necessary? Well, we can transfer those funds to get fund disposition.
We need absolutely every position we can get in child welfare.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, those were some of the questions.
And, and again, I don't, I don't dispute Ms. Ms. Brown's request. I think there does need to be another layer in there. I just think we need to go about it the right way and make sure we're doing it in compliance with, with Office of State Human Resources so we don't create another one of these issues that we've had. And that all of our programs will, can remain covered.
Yeah, and we already have it, um, I already added to the budget. So, we'll work through it internally with the state and figure out, um, what the positions need to be.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you. Okay, so I guess next is just Q and A about other issues, anything that you all, nobody, um, came in to do line by line. So, I'm, I'm, I'm on y'all's time if with any other questions that you all have about the budget. I see Jason left, so, um, I'll try to answer the questions that you have, but he's gone. We might can get him on the phone. Yeah, he, he left at five.
Who, who left?
Jason. I know Dan said he had some questions about the solid waste. Jason falls.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, help me have like a substation down in Williamsburg that we do some use or it's not staffed?
On, on, on Thomas Road?
Mm-hmm.
Is a substation down on Thomas Road?
What kind of substation? Is a Hickspur, what is? Hickspur. Hickspur Volunteer Fire Department.
Oh, that, oh, that's my rating.
Hickspur.
So, but they give the same as everybody else?
Uh-huh, yes, ma'am. Is that the substation? That's not the substation, is it? Is that the one that wanted the additional funding? Yes, that's the one that we were giving the additional funding to.
Correct.
Uh-huh, yes, mhm. That's your only question?
No, I was trying to see if, if they still need all that, since she said nobody there.
Miss Dorst though.
It's.
Oh, he's here, you want to ask you? He's here.
They're here.
Yeah, the chief is here. She has a question about Hickspur, the substation. How you doing? Ask a question?
Okay, um, there's been some statements made that that is a substation, but it's very seldomly anyone there. It's more being used as storage.
It's what now?
Is that correct?
She said that, um, it's been said that there's very seldomly anyone there and to use.
Fire trucks in it.
Okay.
Okay, so when.
What's?
So, whenever you're getting the same budgeted amount as, say, Cokesbury or some of the other ones, how are you using the fund, the extra, since you're not manning it as well as some of the other, um, volunteer fire departments?
So, we have two stations. We have a main station and a substation.
Okay.
You don't give the same money.
So, okay, so you're just getting one set of money, you're not getting two?
Right.
Okay.
We're just now giving them additional for their substation.
We're not asking for another hundred and whatever thousand, we're asking for ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Which is what she has approved.
Mm-hmm, right.
Well, that's just.
She has in the budget.
Yeah, recommended, yeah. It's just, that's just their substation.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I've got, I've got some questions. I guess on the revenue side, in, um, we were collecting like eighty thousand. This year, we've cut the budget back to forty-seven thousand in our previous year's budget. Why, why is that?
What was it? What was it for?
In animal services fees, revenues.
Oh, probably due to animal services. What was the revenue, the, um, difference? Why did we reduce that? I think probably some grant funds that we weren't going to receive, is that what it was? There were some grant funds that we were receiving that we, we did not receive, I believe.
And one of those was PECO, we didn't receive that grant like we did a couple of years ago.
So, that in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the, was a hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred. Last year, it was reduced to eighty thousand, six hundred, and this year, it's recommended at forty-seven, eight, twenty. So, that's a pretty, pretty steep reduction in revenues.
Frankie, can you speak to twenty-three, twenty-four, please?
In twenty-three, twenty-four, we got several grants, um, ASPCA, PECO, um, that's where all that extra revenue come in at.
Now, I applied for that PECO grant this year, but we were only given five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, that money, um, I think somebody, um, one year had donated a lot of money, um, to the animal shelter. Have you all run out of that money now?
Well, we get donations all through the year now. And it's set aside into a fund that we use when we need it for paying, like buying traps and stuff like that. Um, that's just extra money that we use for those purposes.
So, you, you still have money in the reserves?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In the DSS budget, uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget was seven point three million. And this year, the rev, revenues, and this year, it's five point three. Why, why do we, I, I know we haven't slowed down anything.
So, those revenues came directly from social services and from, so I would have to have Sandy answer that because I can't answer it because we get the revenues from social services.
Okay.
So, can you speak to the revenue? Okay.
Just, just a question.
Okay, alright. Uh, why did, why are revenues significantly lower than what they were in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, there were seven point two million, well, right at seven point three million. And then this year, they're five, the recommended budget is five point three, showing five point three million in revenues. So.
Let me see, and I think Cassandra has sent me an email because I asked her if they used.
And then, when we go into inspection revenue, uh, this year, we're estimated to take in right at four hundred thousand, but we've gone back to a budget of three hundred fifty-seven thousand in revenue.
I wanted to be conservative with that because there's no guarantee that we'll receive those funds. So, I asked Stephanie to reduce it just a minute because if we receive it, we're still to the good. But I just had her do that estimate lower based off what we've received up until, I think, April thirtieth, I think. Yeah, we were looking at what we had received up through April thirtieth when we, um, got these estimates. So, that's why I did that. But either way, if we receive it, we'll be to the good.
I have a question I want to ask Ms. Wee.
Sandy, can you come up? Please.
Um, at one point in time, I think we were low on funding where it came to daycare. How do we stand on that? Because I think there was, um, back in, it was some years ago, uh, we were, there was a waiting list for people to get daycare, uh, while they, while we were encouraging people to find jobs. But, uh, so I'm asking where are we at there? Because that's one of the, uh, important things about the county, to make sure that if people, to get people back in the workforce and they can have adequate daycare rather than getting the, um, services through Medicaid and income and.
Right.
These things.
Right, um, right now, we've eliminated the waiting list, so we are good with that. And what we always try to do is we look at our spending coefficient really closely every month because once a quarter, the state will look at the spending coefficients. And so, when you have counties that are really close to their margin, they will reallocate those funds to counties that, um, are trying to get more funds. And so, we're always trying to do that and make sure we're running right at that level so we can be considered for that reallocation if there, if there are other counties that are underspending. I do know that we did lose some of our Smart Start money last year, but that's, that is, you know, not in our control. That's what is done through Smart Start. And we did lose some of our funding from that, but we've been able to make it up through reallocations.
I just wanted to make sure that we don't get in that situation again or if there's something we can do to make sure that fund doesn't go, um, below again where people's on the waiting list.
Yeah.
Um, so, it's in a situation now that if somebody wants to go to work, they need daycare, they're able to get that application in and have it processed and potentially get funding right away.
Yes, ma'am, and there's different ways to get into the daycare. So, like, a lot of times, if it is a work-based need, if they can come through work first, there, that's a whole different pot that we can look at to pull in funding for that. That, if it's, um, also if there's, um, if there are ten and secondary education, we can look at that as well. And anytime there is like a child welfare need, that's automatic. You never go on a waitlist for something like that.
I'd ask about the, um, rec, revenues from the adult sports. And I think the response I got, the best I could read was that they take the revenues and put it in the general fund, in their general fund.
Yeah, we, we've never split revenues with, um, parks. That's something that you all want to discuss, we can.
I mean, that'd be some, that's like going in partnership on a whatever, a food truck. And we both splitting the expenses of it.
Mm-hmm.
And then I take all the money from the revenue we sell it.
I, I understand that, but we've been taking all the revenue for city inspection, so what's the difference? I mean, I'm just.
Well, we, we've got budgeted a hundred and sixty, so I guess we'll go back to a hundred and twenty, I guess, in the budget. Would that change, right?
For?
For inspection fees, you're talking.
Yes, mhm, yes, sir. Mm-hmm, yeah.
No, it's just, that, I'm just curious on that, that, that just didn't make sense.
Yeah.
Wondering if that was something that was consistent throughout, um, the agreements.
Yeah, they've always collected a revenue, but I, I can't even imagine that parks and rec revenue would be anything that would be, I mean, can't be so much. Yeah, I mean.
I just, I was just curious. And then on the, the franchise, uh, video franchise, that went down from a hundred and twenty-eight thousand to eighty thousand. Why, why was that?
Which line item is that, Dan?
It's ten, three, seventy, four, three, seven, oh, oh, three.
Hold on for one second. I have to look, is it not? Do you have any notes on it? Notes, not what they want.
You said ten, three, seven, four, three, seven, oh, oh, three?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it, uh, so what we looked at was also what is, what we collected.
Yeah, we collected ninety-six is what we projected.
Right, but so far for this year, we hadn't collected. Last year, we only collected, uh, eighty-four in the, in the three ten.
Yeah.
Between four, three, three, two, twelve, and.
And I think historically, the, um, revenue estimates were too high. We actually looked in, um, looked in admins and looked at the past two, three years of revenues collected, and that's what we base our estimates off of. I do believe that estimates in revenues historically have been too high, and we did not historically collect the amount that was budgeted.
I just want to make sure the state hadn't gone in with us. You know, those franchise fees at one time, we got all of them.
Mm-hmm.
And the state went in and got them, it's where they go to Raleigh now. And so, but we still get some of them, and I just want to make sure we hadn't changed that.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay. And then on three seventy, four thirty-seven, five eighty-one, the stepping up shares, did we get all the money from the counties this year?
Yeah.
We did, okay. It just showed twenty-four on that thing there.
It's been, I think this year, and this year, we budgeted the eighty-eight because that's what we would get from the other four counties and then our county.
Okay, alright. On, um, ten, four, ten, five, oh, 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 five, three dues, the subscriptions for governing board. You moved the RTRP partnership money from that account.
I think we moved it.
Said moved it to EDC. Um, now, that action was voted on by the board directly to keep that money in the governing body board.
We know when that was? Because I have to pull the minutes.
When we.
Because I wasn't here, couldn't have been.
I understand you weren't here.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you what happened. There was some opposition in the EDC was, there was some dissension at EDC.
Okay.
And so, we, we voted to put that money in our governing board so that we control that.
Okay.
It was whenever we joined back.
But it's just an invoice that's paid, so I don't think it really matters what line item it comes out of. But we can, I mean, I'll pull the minutes.
Well, what, what the EDC said at the time was they had the authority to stop it or not.
Oh, no, that's not gonna happen. But, I mean, we can pull it and move it back if y'all want us to do because.
But then when I look.
That's definitely not gonna happen.
When I looked at the EDC budget, I didn't see that number back.
What is again, um, or what is it? The membership to?
Is it thirteen?
RTRP, thirteen thousand, I believe, sir.
We'll check it. And we can move it back. I'll have Kelly pull the minutes as well. You remember what timeframe that was?
Leo, when did we join RTRP? Three years ago?
When you were?
RTRP.
It had to be about three years.
About three years?
Or wasn't that?
RTRP.
We, we rejoined the RTRP. That was three years ago, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask Kelly to pull the minutes, and we can move it if the board voted on it. RTRP membership dues.
Then we go to the administrative.
Oh, you got it.
It's in the dues and subscription, it's in the, uh, notes.
Oh, dues and subscriptions.
Yeah, regional membership.
Economic development or governing body? Okay, is it in economic development budget? Okay. Okay, so it's in there, okay.
It is in there?
It's in there, but it's just in economic developments, um, budget. But we'll, we'll, we'll have Kelly pull the minutes just to make sure.
Okay. And I was just looking at the expenses for the, um, UNC School of Government, the NCA, Cman, NCACC membership. That went up by six thousand dollars.
We've paid that annually to the association. So, last year, um, it wasn't budgeted. I think we had to find the money last year. So, we've always paid the association and UNC that amount of money, but we just didn't budget for it last year. So, we had to increase that budget based off of that. But it was paid last year. Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you a question. Last year, we budgeted for, um, carts around town, but then we, we eliminate, we never used it. So, I know it, did that go back in? Did, did you reallocate it or was it still?
It would still be there if it was in the budget, but I don't think that we, I can't remember. I don't think that we added.
Because, um.
I don't think it was ever added to the budget, though, because the city decided not to. So, we decided not to keep it in the budget. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, when we found out the city wasn't going to fund it, we decided not to, yeah.
Okay, the, the tax office budget increased by thirty-two thousand, but the regular salaries and stuff went up by about twenty of that or less than that. Yeah, right at twenty of that.
Hmm.
What?
So the tax software, it's Jennifer, uh, we, we, um, so the actual bills are going to be broken down by, um, tax rate and by municipality. So there was an increased cost in that because there was a lot of, um, conversations about the tax bill not breaking down what was city, especially after the tax increases between the city and the county. So we got with the vendor and they're able to break it down, but it was an additional cost to be able to do that. La- years before, we, um, we did not, um, have it broken down just for cost-saving measures, but I feel like an additional twelve thousand dollars is worth taxpayers being able to see what the increases are and what, you know, what their tax rates are and whatever, depending on the municipality that they live in, beside it.
And then the employee listing, there's a deputy tax assessor position. Is that a new position?
Mm-mm, it's not.
It's not.
Mm-mm, that's a position that she just filled, actually, with, um, what's Sharon's last name? Yes, Sharon Brooks Powell. No, it's not. They don't have any new positions. No, sir.
And in legal services, it was increased by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, um, so now we have a contract process, and so Jonathan is heavily involved in contract review. Our auditors actually said that he should have always reviewed all contracts. So he reviews every contract now moving forward, and of course, that just takes more time.
You got, um, Mr. Staff is working with the school system to see if the lottery funds can be used for capital projects.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you check on that?
Uh, we met with them last week. Yes, so we met with them last week, last Thursday, and so we're in the process of doing research to see what that lottery application would look like so we can bring it to you all at your July meeting.
So were there any capital, capital projects that needed funding?
Mhm. So they requested eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do security in, um, the remaining schools that don't have the additional security. And of course, I did not put that in the budget just because of the in- increase in the supplementing classification. So they needed an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was not added in the budget.
So what specific capital, could you give me a, uh, list of the different projects that is not going to be funded because we did not allocate the eight?
It was just the security system.
Okay, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
So they don't need anything in terms of actual parking lots?
Uh, they, next year, starting next year, mhm, yes, ma'am. Yeah, they just wanted the security this year, and so since that was not allocated. Um, we, they got the, the, the capital they normally get, I think it was, we went up by twenty-five thousand dollars. So they got eight hundred thousand in capital, but they need an additional eight hundred and fifty that we did not appropriate or recommend.
So other than the salaries supplements that they asked for, is there anything in particular, other than security, did they need?
No, ma'am.
They have everything they need?
Yeah.
In, in IT, um, office supplies, departmental supplies, they were combined in most departments. Is there a reason that was separated?
In every department, just because we had too many different line items. And so, and departments were picking and choosing what they would pay out of.
So it still appears in the budget as two different lines in the IT.
It had to, just so you all could see the previous year. It had to. So next year it'll be, um, cleaner. You got a question? You got an answer? Come on. She has the answer about the revenues.
It's because our salaries are lower.
Okay.
And so because we get reimbursement for our salaries.
That's right.
Because all of our salaries aren't in there.
That's right. And, and also you only get reimbursement based, based off the positions that are actually filled, and you all have so many vacancies, that's why. Okay, alright, thank you.
I just wanted to ask about, um, the head start question of Eden Johnson. Has those, um, doors been put into, is that complete?
Uh-uh.
The doors have been ordered, and I talked to the contractor today, and he thinks they'll be here this week. So we're hoping to start in the next week or so. Just soon as they get doors, they're gonna get started. We just don't want to cut a hole in the wall and not have a door to go in it.
Yeah, that's right, because the children are out.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they have sufficient amount of room to move the kids to while they're working on it?
Right. Starting this week, most of the kids are out. It's not like one room with kids in it, so we're gonna be able to work around.
Yeah, they're out for the summer.
So maybe that's the only thing they're gonna need in terms of equipping the building to be sufficient for the head start program?
Yes, the, the doors and the ramps leading out.
So in the economic development budget, where is that RTRP at? What line item?
You got it, Stephanie. The script is in dues.
How many more? You got a lot more question out of this?
I do.
Um, because can you email them the question? You can't?
I'm, I want to go through it right here. I, I don't.
I mean, I offered line by line, and I didn't get any, I didn't get, no one reached out to me.
Too, because to do line by line, and it seemed like we're doing line by line, that's why I'm saying if you have. How many more you got? You got a whole book?
I got the whole book.
Well, we're gonna call, I'm gonna get ready to, I think you should, um, email them your question or you was given the opportunity to go to the office to meet with administrator and, um, do line by line.
That's, um, we, we talked about savings and stuff in earlier part of our meetings, and that's what I'm trying to get to is to find these savings. And so that, that's where we're at.
Yes, so, but, um, I, I would like for you to, you got, going through the whole book, I would like you to email them your question so they can give you your answer.
I don't have time to do that, uh, and that's why we have these meetings.
We have these meetings, but we also said we was not doing line by line, and it does look like what we're doing line by line each, each week. And so we gave you the opportunity to go to meet with the staff, if I'm not mistaken. And so we could, and they bring everything you have a question, they brought back to us. So, um, like I said, we're not gonna do line by line, but it seemed like we are. So, um, and if you have any more questions, please email.
Well, I'm gonna stay here and go through the rest of it. If everybody wants to go, you can do that, but I'm gonna stay here.
I'm not gonna stay here all night and do line by line. I'm just gonna, no disrespect to anyone, but I offered this, and I'm not gonna sit here for hours and go line by line. Can we set a date for the budget?
Oh, yeah, set a date.
Yeah.
You got.
Can we adopt the budget? Can we do Monday? Can everybody do Monday?
And we don't have to wait till four o'clock. We haven't, um, we don't have to do four o'clock since I'm all, we could do early if possible.
Okay, what time on Monday is good for you all?
We, we had an increase of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in regular salaries in the sheriff's office.
That, but remember, Dan, that was with the study. We, we have reduced the study. The study has come out, and so that will be reduced now. Everybody just gets a three percent cola.
Um, can we go ahead with the, um, set the dates for?
You let me know, um, are you okay with Monday, the twenty-third?
I, who? No, we can do early, I don't, yeah, so.
So can we do eleven AM?
I'm fine with eleven.
What day you talking about?
Monday.
Monday, the twenty-third. Are you okay, eleven o'clock Monday? Yeah. Commissioner Perry, eleven o'clock Monday, okay with you, or no?
No, we need you to be here. So is, is eleven o'clock fine with you?
As I know right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we can pick another time. What's, what's a good time?
What's a good time for everybody?
If you want to go back to four, it's fine.
That's up to y'all. Four o'clock, Monday.
I'm, you know, what's, is four o'clock better for you, Commissioner?
Four o'clock Monday. Okay, alright.
Yeah, three or four.
There was a five hundred and ten thousand dollar increase in the jail.
We got a motion to adjourn.
What was that for?
In the jail, there was a five hundred and ten thousand dollar increase in the jail budget.
For?
A hundred and ninety thousand of it was, um.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Overtime.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I thought we did. Do we have adjournment for work session?
Oh, yeah, I still think you have to, because you opened. Yeah, 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 you still have to. What was that for, Dan?
On the jail. We had a.
Oh, no, I'm leaving. I'm not gonna go.
Yeah, I, I know the, I know we've added overtime, but the whole budget was five hundred and ten thousand dollars more. Where, where are the three hundred thousand dollars at? Well, it says, it says change from prior year, five hundred and ten thousand at the bottom of the line. There's a hundred and ninety thousand there, and so when you do that, that's about two hundred and, three hundred and what?